I was out with them Thursday night when it rained three and a half inches. I was hoping to stay out of the way, to be honest with you, but they were out there and they did a heck of a job. And, you know, our community compared to other communities, if you watch social media, if you watch the news, was hit a lot less than others. And part of the reason is the work that these individuals have done for the city. I know Karen Kincaid lives up on Monmouth, and before 2018, it flooded every time it rained. It hasn't flooded since 2018 because of the work that we have done. And I can't say enough about our employees and the work that they do for the city in times, regular times, but also times of trouble. They do a fantastic job. So with that, next person I want to bring up, and everybody's got things to go to afterwards, but I want to bring up Rusty Webb. And guys, let me tell you about Rusty. Rusty did the opioid case for several municipalities, and I know we got one check for 300 and some thousand dollars, and we got more checks coming. I don't know how much it totally is, because when I go to read legal lease, it kind of throws me off a little bit, but Rusty.
It throws Mike off, too.
Yeah.
What do you mean? So I wanted to come and thank you all personally, Mayor, and the City Council, for allowing me to represent the city in the opioid litigation. Six years of litigation. We went through six years of litigation, and we finally got some good settlements from pharmacies, manufacturers, and distributors. You're going to get 12 more checks. They're not, it's going to fluctuate because the payouts are different for each company, but you're going to get 12 more checks. If you don't know this, if you're young, I represented St. Olens back in the early 90s and 2000s. So that was the last time I was up here, actually, was probably in 2000. And it was always a privilege to represent this city. The only connection I have right now is I fish the Cold River about every Friday. I come over here and fish, fish above.
It's gotten better, hey?
Oh, it's good fishing. I just want to tell you how good. I don't want it to secret out there. I had these made, and these are under the ethics rules, Mike. These are less than $25 in retail value. In fact, it says it on the card.
What are you running for?
I see all these people here, and I'm like, man, I need to run for something now. I'm getting a fever again. But anyway, I wanted everybody to get one. I hope I brought enough here.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate that very much.
Let me get who's here first, and then get who's here, not the last, because I may have to send some up tomorrow.
Well, Rusty, first one here, though, isn't this out of luck?
No, I want everybody to get one, because it has my card in it. It has my practice area, so.
Thank you, sir.
I'll send a bunch up tomorrow. I still have to go to Delmar. And I'll send some back tomorrow for the council people who weren't here today. But, and then, Matt, that's all I got to say. And I know.
Rusty, I want to personally thank you as Mayor of St. Olens. I know the council and the citizens want to thank you for the work and the due diligence you've done in this case to bring money that's going to help the fire department, the police department with some things that we can do and some other organizations that's dealing at risk kids and stuff like that. So we thank you very much.
Well, you have my number if you ever need any help.
Oh, I got you on speed dial, brother.
My special, Mike.
All right, next, we got Richard Lindsay, who's running for Circuit Court Judge. He's got to be somewhere after this minute, so we're bringing him up.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that, and it's good to see you all here today. I met some of you at the City Council candidate meeting a couple weeks ago, meeting room. My name is Richard Lindsay. I was born in Charleston, West Virginia. I've lived most of my life there. I live on the east end of Charleston with my wife, Allison, who's a P.A. at Riverside Cabin Creek Health Clinic. We've got two boys, Richie, 12, who goes to Horace Mann, and my youngest goes to Sacred Heart. Before I practiced law, I batted groceries at the Foodland on Smith Street. I cut glass at Southern Glass. I unloaded boxes at the UPS facility down the road, waited tables at Tidewater, the old part of Charleston Holiday Inn. So that's my work experience before becoming a lawyer. I want to mention that because I think it's given me a well-rounded experience, an experience that we should hope all our elected officials have. As a lawyer, I've practiced law for over 15 years. I've tried 20 cases throughout the state of West Virginia. I've represented clients from magistrate court to family court to circuit court to the Supreme Court of Appeals. That experience is important because just like everybody else in their daily life, to know the rules and to know how the game's played creates an opportunity to do the best, not only for yourself, but those around you. And it matters when courts have to make decisions. So if you're ever a litigant, you want a judge who knows the rules, who's comfortable with issuing orders, who acts swiftly. I know, in my experience, I'm talking to various city councils throughout the county, that one of the issues that city councils and municipalities run into is property that's been condemned, that's vacant or abandoned. The circuit court takes it up, and then it just sits there. It puts pressure on you all because you want to move that property out, if you want to do something with that property. I think we need to act swiftly in that regard. Other than my experience and my roots here in the county, the only other thing I want to mention to you, just to kind of give you a window, or an idea, or an illustration of who I am as a person. I served in the state legislature in 2019 to 2023 as a state senator from Canal County. The last year I was there, a bill came up that I'm sure you all are more than familiar with that sought to repeal, or prohibit, rather, cities from taxing new auto dealers. That bill passed, and I know it's been hard on you all here in St. Olens. I voted against that bill in an election year, mind you, and I voted against it for two reasons. One, I believe that the government closest to the people is the best. That's your top tax levy, not the state government. I don't believe in overreach. I believe in smaller government and making decisions for the people around you. The second reason is I believe that to be unfair. And despite the political consequences of that vote, despite the fact that I was only one of 634, in fact, I didn't even have the majority of my own caucus, which was in the minority at the time. I just didn't think that was right. And again, I only mention that vote to try to suggest to you the kind of person I am, with my willingness to be fair despite the politics, despite the party favor, and make the right decision according to the law. And so, Mayor, thank you for this opportunity. I thank you for your consideration and hope to have your vote.
Richard, I thank you for that vote because it has, you know, they projected 400,000, but with the price of way automobiles have gone up, we're going to lose, end up, when they, you know, at least we got phased out. We defeated it first year, but we're going to lose 600,000 plus. Now, we're looking at ways to make it up, but I appreciate your support in that. That was nothing but a political bill, by all means, and I thank you for that. Only other thing, and anybody that is running for Circuit Court, I would ask this question. I'll put my police station up against any police station or the fireman, the fire department in the state of West Virginia. The problem we have is when we take them up to Charleston, they beat us back to St. Olens. We've got to have judges that keep criminals in the jail system and quit putting them back out on the street.
Yes, sir, and I agree with you on that, Mayor. I mean, I, again, I can only point to my experiences in the state legislature. I've always supported law enforcement, supported our men in blue, or men and women in blue, and our firemen in red, whether it comes to wages and salaries and pensions, because they're the folks that serve and protect us day and night. So the only other thing I would add, Mayor, just real quick, because I forgot it, is I'm running for the eighth division seat, which is the new seat on the Canal County Circuit bench. I'm not running the gets-in incumbent. There are two contested races. There's Jennifer Bailey against Ashley Dean, and then I'm running in another race altogether. So I just want to make sure that's clear to everyone. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do you want if I leave some cards here on the seat?
Feel free to. Guys, grab your card.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, see you later. Next, we got Rick Cavender with the running for the Board of Education.
All right, thank you, Mayor. The council members, I'm Rick Cavender. I am running for my third term on the Canal County Board of Education. I first ran in 2016. I actually came here and spoke to you all eight years ago when I was first running. Of course, in 2020, I couldn't because of COVID, but glad we can all gather again and be here, and that's for certain, regardless of how busy the campaign season can get. On my last eight years, well, before I get into that, I'm a father of two boys, both in the academy school system, at Capital High, and Horace Mann. Grew up in Charleston, actually in the Systemville area. Graduated Systemville here in 2000, actually a year after Lance.
Thanks, Joe.
Yeah, well, I mean, as I am. But I spent my career over the past 16 years working in urban economic and community development for an organization called Charleston Urban Works, formerly Charleston Main Streets. And I've been very lucky to, to serve the Board of Education, to apply what I believe is the most important thing in our valley, to be around the table, to have conversations about higher education, because that equals jobs at the end of the day, keeping those kids here to work in the battle, whether they're going straight into the workforce, learning a trade, or going off to a college or university. Briefly, over the past eight years since I've been on the board, we've worked really hard to gain your all's support here in St. Olens and every other part of the county for our excess levies. They passed overwhelmingly because you all knew that we would make sure to spend those dollars wisely, and what have we done with those dollars? We have turfed all the football fields in the county. We're getting ready to turf all the baseball fields. We've increased the efficiency of and replaced HVAC units in 30 different buildings so far. We've increased security, which is extremely important, having new security implements so many of our schools. We have added mental health services and make sure that the kids who are struggling with families who are in addiction or whatnot have a place to go in their schools for counselors. We've also made sure to use, very effective use of our COVID bucket, whether that's adding physicians for special ed, and that list goes on as well. One of our biggest accomplishments over the last eight years certainly is the Upriver area. When I was first elected, the flood devastated that entire area, and we promised that area a new school. As you know, we cut the ribbon on that school just this past September to a new one in high school there, Herbivore Highway. It's really an honor to be on the board at that time. We're working on projects right now in McKinley, in McKinley Middle School. We were just at LSIC meeting, getting feedback from McKinley and Hayes and St. Olens High, on what we can do as a school system in bringing that information back to the central office. So, and I could go on forever, but I know we have a long list of folks to speak. So I would just, on a personal note, really quickly, I do see a few faces here in the room. Back last year, my boys and I suffered a terrible tragedy, lost our home and our dog. And so many people in this community in St. Olens stepped up, and they supported us in ways that I never thought was possible. So I just want to take just a second, since I have this opportunity, to say thank you all for that as well. You don't even know what that means to me. Having said that, I definitely would appreciate your support. I know the Board of Education race is extremely confusing to some folks. We operate with the four magistrate districts, just like county commission. The only rule is no more than two people can sit on the board at the same time from the same district. So it is a county-wide race. You vote for your top one, two, or three candidates you want to see on the ballot, have a ceiling board. The districts, as far as who sits in what district, doesn't really matter in most cases. So just to make sure that was clear, to be kind of confused. So anyway, once again, thank you all so much for your time, and would definitely appreciate your continued support.
One more area of praise and recognition. I don't know if any of y'all were down on Old Main today, but J.B. McCuskey's campaign was filming commercials in St. Olens all day today. They sent five or six communities to the filming company to choose where they were going to film. Because of the progress that we've made in putting St. Olens back on the map, they chose St. Olens. And that's a big honor to me, should be a big honor to City Council and all the citizens of St. Olens for the fact that we were chosen to film those commercials here in our community. So any other praise and recognition? Yes, sir?
A lot of praise and recognition for the Parks Department and especially Ms. Debbie Keener on the 10th Annual Walk on the Wild Side event this weekend. It was pretty awesome. If you guys haven't made it to one of those, I think it's, put a notch on your calendar for next year. That's a pretty cool event.
It's awesome. I know Mike Roden, D.E.P., had some, was a vendor up there and was showing off. I called it a Barbie dollhouse, but it was an energy-efficient dollhouse, okay? So they had race cars and everything else. So it was an awesome event, and Debbie Keener works her tail end off to put this on. She really does. Brian Morrison and the crew up at Parks Rec did a heck of a job clearing the walking trails and everything else so people could do that. So thank you all very much. Any other? All right, approval minutes from City Council, April 1st, 2024.
Move, second.
So moving then to second. Do we have any questions or discussion or changes? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. By the way, guys, Walt Hawley is on the phone. I forgot to tell you, Ronnie, I apologize. He's got interims up there, but he took time out to call in on his phone. Rusty's already addressed. New business, refer to planning and zoning commission, the petition submitted by Zachary D. Deal to rezone 945 Lotus Road from R1 Residential to R2 Residential District.
Move, second.
Questions or discussion? Is he here?
Aye.
Aye. Here's my only concern, my only question. Why are you wanting this changed?
When we purchased it back in October of '23 from Canal County, we were informed that it was a multifamily, all-zoned area. From what I understand, going through the process already and creating a petition, that at some timeframe back in 2023, guys got a new map, and because of that new map, it went ahead and rezoned it back to, not back.
R1.
Yeah, rezoned it back to R1, where I think it was built in '56. So ever since then, it was zoned as a multifamily purpose building. So I'm just going through your processes.
My question, are you wanting to put rental property in there? Apartments or whatever?
It's already split up into a duplex.
Okay.
It was a dilapidated building when we bought it, so we've invested money into it. Yep.
Thank you very much for, I call it flipping, but for making the structures better. And I have no problems with rental property if it's done right, you know, and you've got the right people that are written out of there. So if it brings more people to the city of St. Olens, I can live with that. I just don't, and if I offend anybody, I'm sorry. I don't want to huddle house it.
Sure. Yeah.
I have 13 years' experience, already operate Cabo County and Wayne County with 30-plus units. We're on the same page.
Fantastic. Yes, Councilman Roberts?
Since my understanding, this address will be the only one that'll wear these R2.
The, yes.
Go ahead, just let's walk. Okay, all right.
Any further questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Congratulations, Mr. Deve.
Oh, thank you. You go home happy.
Suggested ordinance issues, request from fire chief for an ordinance to adopt West Virginia State Code Language as part of our city code to pursue action in municipal court if and when needed.
So move, second.
Questions or discussion? Who moved that?
Roberts.
Jeremy. And Rob, second. Rockin' rock. That's right.
Many, many moves ago.
Many, many moves ago. All right, with no further discussion evident, I will, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Mayor, I'm assuming his motion is kind of like directly attorney to right public?
Yes, yes. And you'll have to get with Lance on that, get that written. I mean, I don't know what the State Code Language is, but, yeah, the more tools we have to deal with folks that don't want to follow the law, the better off we are. All right. We have no ordinances, first reading, no ordinances, second reading. Finance Committee report recommendation, Councilman Roberts.
Thank you, Mayor. Here we go. I move approval of payment in current invoices in the amount of $28,545.48.
Questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Next, a motion, approval of payment in the amount of $11,747.07 to be paid to Cummins Sales and Service for the Fire Department for turbo replacement from line item 441-459.
Second.
I have a question, just.
Questions or discussion?
What's a turbo replacement? Just information for me.
Well, the truck was intermittently shutting itself off, stalling out as they were driving, and we sent it back to Cummins for diagnostics on the computer. It was throwing engine code, trouble code. We thought it was a fuel issue, but it turns out that trying to keep it simple, there's veins inside of the turbo. It was shorted out, it was worn out.
I kind of make sense what.
Yeah, it's a turbocharger in the exhaust, and it was worn out.
Any further questions and discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Next, the motion is to approval of payment in the amount of $5,000 to pay to Mountaineer Uplift for Public Works Department for blade crate and winged pack from line item 566-343.
Second.
Questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Last motion is permission to seek bids for open-top dumpster for Public Works Department to be made via REIT slash DEV grant.
Second. Questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Letters and reports, I'll go first. Public Works Committee, spring cleanup to begin last week of April through the first week of May. We've got on our city website, other places. I know you all had handouts here on the spring cleanup, so let's get word out for sure. All right? Any, Councilman? Yes?
We have the 25177 Foundation. Citywide cleanup was rescheduled, will be Saturday, April the 20th.
Saturday, April the 20th, that's this Saturday. No? Yes, yes, yes.
8:00 AM, at Grace Baptist Temple Park. We have 100 signed up.
Thank you, sir.
Parks report, I'll second everything that everybody else said for the trail phenomenal event. Debbie does awesome, 10 years, 11 years in. And the day of the event, Debbie was talking about pioneers as the topic for the next year's event, and already started on 2025's event. So does a phenomenal job. And along with that, like everybody said, Parks Crew was working their tails off to get the damage taken care of so that we could still have the event. Good job to them, great, great work on their part with the other departments. That's right, Brian. And then the event that, the event had over 160 people filter, came out to it. Great turnout, again, as I said before, from old to young. Everything that was expected was there, so great thing. Local business shout-out. Jeremy Folker's shop donated some new cuttings for the kids to paint and carve and decorate on, so a great community event, all around, from business to elderly, to young, to departments. Awesome event, so way to go, Debbie, on that. Event coming up in the near future, April 27th is Music Night over at Roadside Park. It's, the whole list is Evie Schaefer, Gracie May, Ashley Adair, Samuel James, Randy Gilkey, which Gilkey I've known since college. That dude is awesome and a heck of a musician. Go listen to him. Gary Hayes, Brian Diller, and Jim Snyder will all be playing there. So the Cole's Mouth Concert Series will be April 27th, starting at 6 o'clock. So a whole big old lineup. Please come out and enjoy. Hopefully, weather permits, but we'll be there.
Awesome. Any other letters and reports? Mike, you got any of that?
No. I, really, thank you to the Public Works and the cleanup.
Unbelievable. Done a heck of a job. Still got more to go, too. Then I'm calling John Board Day, bugging him about getting some grass cut in certain areas. I said, I know you're overwhelmed, but, you know. No other letters or reports? All right, we have no appointments, announcements. Lay the levy Tuesday, April 16th at 5:00 PM in the MUC Conference Room. Must have a court. Ronnie, do we have a commitment of a court?
Yeah, if everybody shows up at the phone, then we have a court.
All right, very good.
It's about over 10.
Yeah, well, I'll call and remind you, ladies. All right, MS4 MUC Board, tomorrow night, April 16th at 5:30 PM in the MUC Conference Room. Committee meeting, discuss usage of St. Olens Junior High School property, Thursday, April 25th at 6:00 PM in the council chambers. Finance Committee, Monday, April 29th at 4:30 PM at City Hall. Primary election, early voting, May 1st through May 11th, Monday through Friday, 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Saturdays, 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM at City Hall. All right? Closed Sunday. All right? Public Works Committee, Wednesday, May 1st at 8:00 AM at the City Garage. Parks Committee, Thursday, May 2nd at 6:00 PM at the Hansford Center. City Council, Monday, May 6th at 6:30 PM in the council chambers. Any other announcements? All right, with no further announcements, we got a fire levy election. Guys, this is maybe, this is the most important election on our ballot. All right, the fire levy election, Tuesday, May 14th, or early voting, if you choose to do that. This will not be a new tax, but merely the continuation of the present levy, which has been in effect since 1951. The receipts of this levy provide over one-third of the amount required to operate the St. Olens Fire Department per year. Now, I understand, if this levy does not pass, it's going to be hard to maintain St. Olens Fire Department as a full-time fire department. All right? So we need to get word out to our neighbors, all right, to our constituents, that we need to vote for this. This is not a tax increase. Yes, sir?
Is this the one that requires a 60% margin or is it?
Yes, 60% margin. Has to get 60%.
Scott?
Yes, sir.
Do we not have any signs out? Because I was out this weekend, Lord, feeling.
We cannot use public funds.
You can't.
No, I've already called the state office.
We've called, we cannot use public funds for advertising of any type for levy elections. We've tried.
The inmates can put that up there.
Now, you all can, you know, so the city cannot use city funds for promotion of levy elections. That comes from the state. Not that I agree with it, but it is what it is, you know? So it's up to us to get the word out on this levy election. All right, public, it's now time for public forum. Any resident wishing to address council, you may step up to the podium, give your name, your address, and you've got five minutes to speak your piece.
My name's Karen Kincaid. I live on Monmouth Street. I'm still. I'm still wanting to know about this water and sewage for American Water. I don't agree with it. And, you know, you got employees that are going to lose their job. Where do they go? Because they do get rid of. I talked to a guy who works with you, New Water. He said he was, he never worked there, but he ended up where else to go? You know, and you got, and they're going to get rid of the ones he said are close to retirement. That's bad too, okay? And your bills are going to trip. You go along with that, you have to pay your sewage. Say you paid $50 a month, and you got your sewage bill, then you pay a $15 bill to American Water, pay your rent. Now, there are people up in West Coast, still haven't done anything, okay? I have a problem with that, American Water. I will not fight it. I will fight it to the nail. And yet, I know how to do it. Thank you, God bless.
Thank you, Karen. I appreciate it. I know as long as I'm sitting in this seat, I will fight every effort to sell the water sewage company to West Virginia American Water, because it's going to put a burden upon our citizens, and there's no need for that. So when we've got a very good, we just want to call a war for water. Why would we want to sell? I mean, during the chemical leak, who was the only community that had water? St. Olens. So, anyway, any others want to speak in public forum? All right, with no other apparent public forum speakers, I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
Second.
All in favor, say bye.
Bye.
Thank you all.